Good morning and welcome to the October 12th, 2022 City Council Meeting. We will begin with the invocation from Councilman Westbrook followed by the pledge. If you please stand.
Pray with me. Heavenly Father, we come to you with grateful hearts. We're grateful for our first responders. We're grateful for this wonderful city team that serves our citizens. We're grateful for the opportunity ourselves to serve you and this community. We ask humbly that you provide us now with life-giving rain in this change of the seasons. We also ask for wisdom in this new fiscal year as we continue to plan and manage the business of the city. We ask all these things in your name, Christ Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll begin with the minutes from September the 14th, 2022.
Let's approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
A motion by Westbrook, second by Wynn. Halls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. A1, Kyle.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
It's my honor today to present the certificate of achievement for planning excellence to the City Council. This is presented by the American Planning Association Texas Chapter. The APA is a nonprofit public interest and research organization representing over forty thousand practicing planners, officials, and citizens involved with urban and rural planning issues. The APA Texas Chapter has an awards program. The Richard R. Lilly FAICP Program for Planning Excellence recognizes planning excellence in municipalities throughout the state. Evaluation criteria includes the level of training for appointed planning commissioners and professional staff, also professional qualifications of the planning staff, and the currency of any master plans approved by the City Council. The City of Tyler's planning department has been awarded the twenty-two or twenty-two certificate of achievement for planning excellence in recognition of the professional planning demonstrated by planning staff as well as the support from the planning commission as well as City Council. This is the eighth consecutive year that the City of Tyler Planning Department has received this award. You can see the award on the screen and before you on the table. The certificate of achievement for planning excellence is a special honor as it recognizes the devotion of the City of Tyler's professional planning staff as well as the support from elected and appointed officials. It is recommended that the City Council accept the certificate of achievement in planning excellence from the American Planning Association Texas Chapter in recognition of the exemplary professional city planning.
Thank you, Kyle. We did come down before the council meeting started and took pictures and accepted the award, read a proclamation. And as I said then, and I'll say it again, you guys do a phenomenal job. And for the eighth year in a row to receive the award says a lot about what you guys do. I do want to recognize David Hudson, who's been the chair of that board for, I think, twenty-six years. Not really. But no, but thank you for what you do. Y'all do a fabulous job. And so we thank you for what you do. All right, R1.
Good morning, Council. Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
This resolution is a long time coming. Back in 2020, Keep Tyler Beautiful received the honor of being awarded the Governor's Community Achievement Award from Keep Texas Beautiful for its exceptional programming and events. Keep Tyler Beautiful also received this accolade in 2008 and 2018. And upon receipt of this award, Keep Tyler Beautiful, we've been working with TechStop to select a beautification project to fund. Unfortunately, due to COVID and other delays, we were working on different projects trying to decide what to do. And we have finally agreed to do funding for the Entrance Revitalization Project at Lindsay Park. Funds up to $290,000 would cover part of the cost of improving landscaping and constructing archways at the two main entrances leading to the sports complex just off of the spur. The lettering and signage will not be included, but all, like I said, all the landscaping and construction will be included in this project. So today, we are just requesting that the Council considers adoption of this resolution for the acceptance of funding to complete the Entrance Revitalization Project at Lindsay Park as part of the 2020 Keep Texas Beautiful Governor's Community Achievement Award to be filed with TechStop.
Any questions for Aaron?
Second.
Got a motion by McGee, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? Halls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks.
Thank you. P1. Darren.
I'd like to request that the City Council consider receiving a presentation on the results and recommendations from Half Associates resulting from the Convent Stormwater Master Plan. And Michael Metford with Half is going to be here to give that presentation. We just wanted to give y'all an kind of an update on the formal findings of the final plan.
Okay.
That's what he's here to do.
Great. Thanks, Darren. Morning, Michael.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Council members. Mr. Broussard, sir. Again, my name's Michael Metford. I served as the project manager for this three-year program. And we just had been requested to give you guys a brief synopsis of the program again. We did do a fairly in-depth presentation about a year and a half ago about the program's progress. And I'd like to briefly summarize some of those points and mostly focus on what's occurred since that presentation was given as we reached the conclusion of the project. Well, once again, I'm with Half Associates. Our partner's Brandon Corporation. We're instrumental in getting this project delivered. And without further ado, our purposes and objectives for this project were to take a holistic view of the city's closed conduit stormwater systems. It was decided when the scoping was taking place that open channels were to be excluded because the Nathan D. Meyer study of 2008 was accurate enough. Most of the profiles at that time hadn't changed very much into open channels, so we considered it a redundancy and a poor use of funds to replicate that work. So this was focused on closed conduit systems only. So in order to undertake a project like this, it's got to be built on a solid foundation of data. So we collected data from a number of sources. We assessed the closed drainage systems, looked at hotspots throughout the city, excuse me, and are assisting the city with developing a capital improvement program to address the numerous issues that we identified during the course of the program. This is a year-by-year overview. Again, with year one, it was mostly dedicated to data collection. We collected data from a wide variety of sources and built that database. And in year two, we started exploiting and using the data to do some high-level analysis. And by year three, we were identifying and ranking capital improvement program projects and benchmarking and working with the city to collaborate on implementing the plan. To start off with, again, the quality of a project like this is highly dependent upon the quality of the data that you, pardon me, that you collect at the outset of the project. So one of our very first tasks was to gather GIS data throughout the city, topographic data. And we built all of our models and made all of our design decisions based upon that GIS data and topography. We established and maintained a project web map, the contents of which have all been turned over to the City of Tyler. But Half hosted this web map, and it was basically a repository for all of the data that was collected throughout the project. In fact, we're still adding some items to that web map. It's a dynamic web map, and it's just served as a collection, a collection device for all this data. Again, data collection, we collected data from a wide variety of sources. We used record drawings, field data collection, public input, FEMA records, first responder reports. And all of this was integrated into that map, and it was studied. And we triangulated all these points to find hotspots that were backed up by the modeling that we did, in particular, the rain on mesh analysis, which simulated rainfall events from the two-year storm through the 100-year storm across the city without taking into account inlets to look for low spots and hot spots. And we tried to match up where we had hotspots based on this analysis with public complaints, first responder reports, FEMA reports, FEMA filings, firm filings, and things like that. We did conduct two public meetings, one at the Rose Garden, one at the Faulkner Police Station. We have members of the public who were experiencing some localized stormwater issues show up and fill out a form, and we took all that into account and mapped that as well. From there, after the data was collected, we began our H&amp;H analysis, beginning with high-level analysis with identifying sub-basins, inlet groupings throughout the city. This is a screenshot of what that looks like. And one additional service that was decided that the city decided to add to the program in year two was outfall location mapping. This is, this was intended to assist the city in developing their stormwater management plan as required by TCEQ. Year to year, you know, this is going to be a help to the Environmental Department, Engineering Department in developing and maintaining that document. Another additional service that we undertook in year two was a curb inlet condition assessment throughout the city. We visited all the curb inlets that we could find in the field and from record drawings, and we popped the lids on them, we looked down, and we assessed them from a functionality standpoint and a structural integrity standpoint. And we gave each inlet a rating of good, fair, and poor. And the basis, the intent of this that was expressed to us by the City Engineering Department at the time is that they wanted to form a foundation for a curb inlet maintenance program and replacement program that all of this data would help to implement. So we've given all this data to the city and are working with the Engineering Department on how to implement this so that our storm drains and inlets function better and, excuse me, are structurally sound. Following that, moving into year three, the culmination of the Stormwater Master Plan was to develop capital improvement projects. And we did that for both stormwater projects as well as erosion problem, problems that were seen throughout the city. We collaborated intensely with the city on the criteria that was used to rank these projects. Some of those are on the spreadsheet there. You know, it's public, public safety, level of property damage and things such as that. So all those factors were applied to these particular hotspots that we had identified, and the projects were then ranked. With the top ten projects for both erosion and stormwater appearing in the body of the final report and the rest of the project reports appearing in the appendix. This is an example of the stormwater summaries that we did. They're four- to five-page summaries that give a background of what's happening at that particular location, a map, the methodology that was used in the preliminary, the preliminary modeling and design, and a cost estimate, a preliminary cost estimate that we went back last year and revised to express that in $2022 to account for inflation. Initially, we had done those in $2019 slash $2020, and we wanted these to be as accurate as possible since everybody knows what inflation's done to construction costs in the past couple of years. So those have all been revised to reflect the latest, the latest costs that we could find for the individual items here. Another, excuse me, another aspect of this program was to benchmark the City of Tyler's drainage criteria against those. We found that cities of similar size, topography, rainfall, annual rainfall, et cetera. And out of the thirty-one criteria that we, that we assessed, the city directed us to investigate the ones that appear on the screen before you, the six there in more detail. We had numerous meetings with city staff and city management to discuss these, and also had a meeting with numerous different organizations and groups within the city to get their input on this as well. Pardon me. So where we stand right now, we are still collaborating with city staff members on CIP budgets and priorities, how to implement this, the benchmarking findings, and evaluating future needs and where we can go from here with the, with the project. One thing that we're doing right now with Darren and his staff is we're looking at some of the more recently developed basins that have stream profiles that have likely changed since the Nathan D. Meyer study in 2008 was finalized, just due to more recent development trends. And most of those are in the southwest, southern, and southeastern parts of the city. And we're taking a look at those to see if there are any warrants that would compel us to look at those open channels in a little bit more detail. More the northern parts of the city and the more developed and older parts of the city have virtually been built out, so the stream profiles aren't going to change a whole lot there. But in the southern parts of the city where more recent growth has taken place, it could warrant another look at the open channel characteristics in those basins. With that, I'd like to entertain any questions that anybody may have for me.
Michael, let me ask, how do you, and I know that citizens get confused with this, how do you determine what's the city's responsibility and what's the private citizen's responsibility? Is, when is it, there's right-of-way, there's not right-of-way?
Yes, sir. That definitely plays into it. We take a look at what their problem, the problem they brought to us. And this has only happened in a few instances, but whether or not it's, it's an issue with city-owned infrastructure, city-owned storm service systems functioning properly, you know, if there's a clogged line and it's backing up or a clogged inlet, you know, as I mentioned with the stormwater inlet assessments, we take a look at that and determine whether or not it's, it's a problem of city-owned infrastructure, or if they've got a grading problem in their yard, or if they're not draining something properly out of their yard. And also, Mayor, whether or not there's a City of Tyler drainage easement associated with it. Many of the erosion problems that we, that we discovered throughout the city are actually take place on private property. They're in established stream channels, natural stream channels, but they're wholly, wholly within private property. And since the City of Tyler has no easement or anything, they're not obligated necessarily to, to rectify any of those problems. We limited that to erosion problems that have had a direct effect on any city infrastructure, aerial crossings, water lines, streets, and things such as that.
Okay. Any questions for Michael or Darren?
I do. That leads me, when you made that very last statement about the responsibilities of the city versus the private citizen. So as part of your charge, have you been asked, or will you provide recommendations for changes to the building code? Because moving forward, to just simply make the repairs and not take a look at the code itself is only half the job. So that just ensures that we're going to have problems again as we move forward. So is that part of the plan?
Yes, sir. That was really the outcome that we were looking for with the benchmarking task. And those recommendations went to city management and the benchmarking task that the city deemed implementable and most applicable to the problems that we're experiencing and foreseeable problems in the future. Those are being taken under consideration.
Let me add to that.
Please.
Basically, what they also did as far as this is they made recommendations of how to update our drainage and stormwater runoff ordinance. And we are taking those into account right now and wanting to update the stormwater ordinance based on some recommendations that they had in the stormwater master plan.
Perfect. And who's going to be making those recommendations and code change?
We are in the process of writing it right now and revising it, and then we'll be taking out to, for community involvement, community input.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Michael.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Michael or Darren? All right. This is just a presentation, no action, so thank you for the presentation.
Yes, sir. Thank you, guys. We appreciate the opportunity to do the work.
Thank you. All right, Cameron, P2 and P3.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
Cameron Williams, traffic engineer for the City of Tyler. So here to give you a presentation to report on results and recommendations that came from our Grande reverse curve study. And before we get started, I will recognize, so Brandon Corporation was a consultant who helped us with this study, and they also had a subconsultant, Lee Engineering, who is traffic-specific, who did a lot of the safety analysis as far as accident reports and different things that went into this study. So as a, just a brief overview, the location, you're probably very familiar with it, but Grande between Holly Tree and Old Jacksonville, there is a reverse curve in that section. And just a little bit of an overview as far as kind of existing conditions. So this section of road was constructed and designed eighty-three, nineteen eighty-three, nineteen eighty-four. There's been some rehab on that location. So it carries about nineteen thousand vehicles per day. The posted speed limit is forty-five miles per hour. The eighty-fifth percentile speed, which means that eighty-five percent of the people who are driving on that roadway are driving forty-five miles per hour or less. So that kind of gives you an idea. There is a warning sign that says recommends thirty miles per hour, but that's not something that is enforceable from a ticketing standpoint. That's just a recommendation. And you also have, you know, various geometry. You've got horizontal curves, and you've got some vertical curvature in the roadway at that location. Kind of point out there in that exhibit that you have, we call it, consider positive and negative cross slopes. So positive cross slope, just basically think that that helps you as you go through the curve. Think of NASCAR banking on a roadway. The negative is the opposite of that. And you see that negative as you exit the curve. And so kind of gives you an idea. A real quick look at kind of crashes, this is in the eastbound direction. And really, to sum it all down, so the consultant kind of grouped it into two zones in the eastbound direction, kind of more of what they considered an impaired or distracted zone as you enter the curve. So somebody who's maybe texting or impaired in some sense doesn't realize the curve is coming, and they go through the curve. The second zone is as you exit the curve, is really a hydroplain. So there were a lot of wet-type raining or wet pavement conditions that contributed to those accidents and loss of control. And I will say, there were fifty-seven total crashes that were reported between 2011 and 2020 on this section of roadway. In the westbound, you had very similar. They had a couple more zones, but in general, you had that more distracted impaired as you're entering the curve. They don't realize it. And I think that's even more the case in the westbound direction, is as you enter that curve, you're going down that Encore right-of-way power line. And that power line continues to go straight, and so all your visual cues is the road continues straight, and then it curves. And so then you also have that hydroplain area as you exit the curve, those rain conditions. And that's kind of where you see the apartment complex. Y'all seen probably accidents in that fence line there. So really, kind of to summarize, the real findings that they had was you had a higher percentage of those with wet pavement conditions, rain conditions, and also conditions, there's no illumination in that area. So kind of more a higher percentage of nighttime crashes compared to the rest of the city. So just kind of give you the overview. Talk about, we looked at four different options. I'll run through those fairly quickly and then do a comparison and then talk about our recommendation. So one, option one, was leave the alignment as is and add the LED Chevron signs. You've probably seen those more in the county, that illuminate as you go through the curve, and also retroreflective pavement markings. So that, one, this is really helping make that curve more visible, help those visual cues realize people are going through the curve, and help that nighttime condition as well. Option two is basically the exact same, include those same improvements as option one, but add what we call a high-friction surface treatment. And so this is a very specific treatment to improve that skid resistance and friction of that pavement, and shown great results from studies and different implementations of improving that safety and reduction in crashes. Option three includes all of option one and option two, but also recommends the relocation of the Encore Tower that is on the east side of the, east end of the curve. So again, that kind of creates a site distance restriction. You don't necessarily have the stopping site distance, realize, don't realize the curve is there. And so by relocating that, we're going to improve that site distance for that location. And then lastly, option four would be the total reconstruction of that section. And that would include the relocation of that Encore Tower because you would need to get it out of the way to improve the geometry, the curves, add a tangent, and also do some super elevation, so kind of that banking you think with NASCAR to improve, you know, some safety as you go through those curves. That one does require right-of-way acquisition in order to achieve that option four. To hit on a couple things that we did not consider, that you'll probably hear, is one, just lower the speed limits. And that's something that, from a legal standpoint, we have what we use as the eighty-fifth percentile study speed. So that says, measure what the speed's going, use that to help set the speed limits. And so if we were to do something much lower than that, especially on arterial, you'd be setting yourself up for potential, you know, if trying to enforce that, creating a speed trap and those concerns. And that's why typically in locations like this, you have that warning speed. Here's the speed limit, but as you enter this curve, you know, we're recommending that you go at a slower speed. Some illumination. So I mentioned that those nighttime crashes were something that we saw, but with those Encore high-voltage power lines, putting illumination in that section is just not really very reasonable. As we actually have some traffic signals that are along Holly Tree, I mean, actually Holly Tree and South Broadway that are underneath those, we get some induced voltage in those poles. And so from a safety maintenance, working on those, that just wasn't something. So that's why you see us those, enhancing that nighttime with the LED Chevrons, raised pavement markings. And then also a raised median. So putting in a raised median of some sort would be introducing a median that's nowhere else on that section of Grande. You might have to have some type of crash barrier treatment, depending on the type of median that you put in. You'd also start restricting access to some of those properties that are in that area. And also, at that point, you're not necessarily treating the cause of the accidents, you're just trying to reduce the severity. So you may actually create more accidents, people bouncing off medians, bouncing off curves. And so that was one of the reasons why we didn't consider that as a recommendation at this time. So lastly, here's just a brief summary of the four different options. Is on the first column, you see a yearly benefit. Basically, when we look at these different treatments, we have what's called a crash modification factor. We can estimate based upon historic data how much we're going to reduce crashes, and then you apply a dollar value to the types of crashes, and this is the kind of benefit we would expect. And then an opinion of cost to construct or implement these. And then we came up with a benefit-cost ratio, just as another way to try and compare the different options and see how to move forward. And so with that, our recommendation at this time is to go with option three. So that includes that high-friction surface treatment to improve the friction on that section of pavement, to put in the LED Chevrons and the reflective pavement markings to enhance that at night and give those better visual cues, and to go ahead and relocate that Encore Tower to improve site distance. And then two, we reevaluate in five years, and if this has not achieved the goals that we want, then you could be set up to do something different, like total reconstruction. Because if we do reconstruction, we're going to have to relocate that Encore Tower, and that could be a two- or three-year project. And that could be a two or three year process. So that's kind of where those recommendations come from. So with that, I will pause and see if you have any questions.
So where do you relocate, relocate the tower?
So you'd have to do kind of a combination of two mono poles, just singular poles. So you basically would shift that one to the east and then you would have another one that's just on the really south side of Grande at that location. So you basically take the one pole, turn it into two, spread them out a little bit. And those, as you can see in that picture on the right, that's an older trust style, which is a much larger footprint pole. So we go back with just a single monopole, single pole that you see in other places along Grande.
Cameron, can you explain timeline, funding? This will be half cent sales tax funds and when y'all expect to do this?
Sure. So absolutely. So a funding standpoint, it would be half cent sales tax. I think we could move forward with the LED Chevron signs as quickly as we could. I think you're probably looking at this point us to get, we can maybe do that through some type of buy board contract and get that installed ourselves. But probably early spring would be maybe a timeline with all the approvals. And then as far as the, the pavement friction standpoint, what we would propose is including that as part of our annual asphalt enhancement program. So work with our engineer who does that and include that in the program for next spring and summer timeframe would be the ideal for that.
Any other questions for Cameron? Go ahead.
The, were the costs that you had on option one, two, and three, were those cumulative? Is, is option three, does it include two and one?
It does. And that's why you see the jump from option two to option three is really that Encore power pole relocation.
And, and another one, and I don't know if Ray and Bob want to jump in on this too, but, you know, I, I look at all this and obviously something needs to be done with all the problems that are occurring, have occurred. But I wonder, when we look at this, what do we do to make sure this doesn't happen again? I mean, what, what went wrong in eighty-three when this was designed to set us up for this problem?
Yeah, so I think, you know, from eighty-three, eighty-four, based upon, so getting into the, really the details, the horizontal geom, the vertical geometry meets a forty-five mile per hour design speed. So that's good. And from a horizontal curvature, you have, when you have that positive cross slope, it meets that forty to forty-five. Once you go to that negative cross slope, it's more of a thirty-five to forty mile per hour design speed. And in a, what we consider this more of a low urban design standard, the parabolic ground that you have, super elevation is not required. So that was not something that was required at the time and still isn't today. And the other thing is it was a probably, it is a true reverse curve. There's no tangent in between the two directions. So you go from one curve into the next. So, and that might have been a factor of working with the right-of-way and Encore at the time, that they didn't want to relocate something. Don't know the history at that point. But from those standpoint, I think if we were to design another roadway today, we would keep those things in mind, knowing the history of this location as far as we'd make sure we have a tangent in between there and maybe build in some of that super elevation for those design speeds.
Yeah, so, so really, oh, go ahead, Ed.
I know that Ray Boudreaux and Bob, Brad and Brandon Corporation did the study for us are also here as well. I don't know if they wanted to just say anything about or towards that as well.
Do you have a question? The, yeah, well, yeah, it surprises me that, and not you, but that, that the, I guess the standards or whatever, that you wouldn't have said, oh, yeah, there's no way that this would happen again today. But you're kind of saying, well, we'd have to make sure it doesn't.
I think you, the standards are kind of there. The, I think probably the biggest thing at that point would be your tangent between those two curves. And then being mindful, you know, actually, when you get this big of a roadway and that parabolic, you're getting a negative four percent or five percent cross slope on those outer edges. And so that's working against you from that standpoint.
And the last one is, what's the lifespan on the high friction surface?
So we answer, we, we kind of anticipate about a ten-year lifespan at this point. So you do see a very, a higher skid resistance at first, it dies down and then levels off. But from the time that you install it and even levels off, it's probably, I would estimate based upon the information, two to three times the typical skid resistance that would you get on a typical pavement that we would put down. And then, you know, after ten years, reapply.
Yeah, okay.
Cameron, you did mention that nineteen hundred vehicles travel during the course of the day. Does that have any bearing perhaps on this grid itself?
So, and I, and you know, one thing to keep in mind, I mean, you know, this was designed eighty-three, eighty-four. The volumes have increased. And so has that increased the, the number of accidents that we see in that area? The other thing, I believe in the past, from twenty-eleven to twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty, there were three fatalities that occurred. Any one of those crossovers that occurs, if there's another vehicle coming in the other direction, could turn into a fatality. And so what can we do to help with those volumes increasing?
Right.
Improve that?
Cameron, are there any other roadways within the city or county that are similar design that y'all can look at to see if any changes have been implemented there? And if they have worked to help assess the situation?
I would say, you know, you definitely seen in the county on a lot of their curves, and this has been on texted out roadways where they've implemented those LED Chevrons. And so those are definitely seeing, I think you've seen a benefit and improved enhancement. I think that, you know, you just look at the conditions of this one. On Shiloh Road, east of Broadway, you have a kind of similar S curve. But I think that's a much more tighter right-of-way. You have, it's not as open. You don't have the big long stretches in between. And so I don't think you're seeing as high speeds as this Grande section. It's more open, people feel more comfortable going, going faster. And so what can we do to help address that?
Cameron, I have two questions for you. Bad drivers, distracted drivers and speed are the cause of that. So the drivers are the problem. You told us once before, what is the accident number that triggers this type of study and potential change? This is question one. And then if we move forward and say we do option three or two, what's the downtime on Grande for the application of the new overlay? And then the disruption of traffic that we would see from that?
The first part, you know, what I guess crashes or crash rate triggers this type of study is that?
Yeah.
I don't know that we have a specific one that I'm aware of. It's just the fact that this had been such a safety concern and something that was, you know, brought to the forefront. We need to do something to improve that. So I don't know that I have a specific answer for that question. But on the downtime, I may see if Bob or Ray can speak to that. But I would say you're probably with the, the milling and the overlay and the application a day, a couple of days type of, you know, disruption of traffic and that would be probably one or two lanes at a time. Would that be accurate? Whereas opposed, if you did a total reconstruction, you would have a much more impact and longer duration to that section.
Last question relates to the Encore tower, moving that tower. Working with Encore, is that going to be an onerous task? Is there any disruption of power or how does that happen?
Do we need to ask Tim to come up and answer that one?
Tom.
Tom, I mean.
I, I can't answer anything. This is the first time we're hearing about that.
Okay, go ahead.
So Brandon Corp has reached out and talked to Encore about this. And that's kind of where some of the budget numbers came from for this. I wouldn't, with something like just gut, with that type of relocation, they can't have a disruption of power. I mean, that's too much of a high voltage, I would assume. But they have already started a conversation, at least Encore representative that they've talked to, you know, knows about that discussion. But there would be a much longer process. Again, that's kind of why the recommendation, let's go ahead and start pursuing that now. So in case later down the road, that's something that we want to do as far as the geometric changes. But we do see a site distance benefit by doing it now as well. But if we wait five years, two years, then you've got to wait another three years to get it done. So that's kind of where that recommendation comes from.
Any other questions for Cameron?
You know, I guess my only other question is, I noticed that this is a presentation and not an action item. So why is it just a presentation and what happens next if we're not taking action today?
Great question. So one is an opportunity to give y'all the, the results, recommendations, get feedback. If y'all want us to take a different direction or do something different, we can go and reevaluate that. If not, we will move forward with those recommended action items as far as the LED Chevrons. And then we would come back to council with an actual contract that says, here's us to install these actual measures.
And by then, we might have more answers from Encore.
They, they were working with Charles before me, so.
Okay, so since we're not taking any action, thank you for the presentation. We would like to.
Move forward.
We're not taking action. Okay, thank you for the presentation. P three.
All right, you get double featured today, so try to keep y'all engaged. So traffic calming policy. A little background, so why are we even talking about this? As staff, we get lots of phone calls about concerned citizens of speeding in their neighborhoods. As city council, I'm sure y'all get lots of phone calls about concerns about people speeding in your neighborhoods. And typically, the, the phone call is, hey, we've got people speeding, can you put up a stop sign? People speeding, can you put up a speed hump? Well, stop signs are not meant to control speed. They're meant to control right-of-way and also safety concerns from a site distance or volume level concerns. So that's when you want to do a stop sign. I can tell you probably nine times out of ten or nine point nine 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 times out of ten, when you do an always-stop study, the volumes do not meet that threshold for putting in always-stop. Speed humps is something that we have not wanted to or really recommended here in the city. That is something that you start impeding your emergency vehicle responses on those. There's also, yeah, it sounds great, but then it, it gets pretty annoying over time of going over those speed humps from those concerns. And you also really to achieve lower speeds, you've got to have them quite frequently to do that. And so there's a maintenance concern and different things. So that is not something that we have wanted to or recommended doing in the city. And so currently, our process has been, got a concern, we may put out a speed feedback radar trailer that the police has. We may do that always-stop and say it doesn't meet, sorry. And so we've really been handcuffed on what we can do and that process has been kind of the one-off. If one citizen calls, we look into it. And so we are really setting up a process to do this. And I will say that we did have HDR engineering helped us put together this traffic calming policy. They have done that for other cities and they also looked at other cities' policies and help us put this together. So here's just really an overview of the process. I'm not going to go into every single detail of it. I want to hit some high points of it. But really, it starts with that request. And so, you know, historically, if there's been one citizen who had a concern, they would call and we'd have to look at it or put it on our list to eventually look at it at some point when we had time. This part of it says, hey, we need a, a champion, somebody who's a resident on that street, a business owner on that street, a school representative. And then you need to have support from that neighborhood. It can't just be an individual. We need to know that the neighborhood believes that there's a concern for that. And then there's kind of a process and a form to submit that request. And we're going to take these basically, we can take them throughout the year, but twice a year, we will evaluate and screen those and then make recommendations to move forward. So talking about that, that screening process, we've kind of put to their criteria to say, this is when we will look at it. So it has to be a public street, it has to be a local residential or collector's street. So nothing that's carrying a lot of commercial traffic in arterial. Those are not candidates for doing some type of mitigation to reduce speeds. The speed limit has to be thirty miles per hour or less. So and that's, you know, thirty-five or forty, those are roadways that are carrying more traffic maybe, or they have different conditions. And trying to lower speeds, lower than that can create the safety conditions of its own because of speed differential. And the street must be paved. We would then collect data on that. And so there has to be some type of evidence of pedestrian data. Because again, really looking at improving that pedestrian safety in these areas. That's a lot of the concern and what the function of these areas are. So some type of evidence of speeding. So when we do that eighty-fifth percentile, let's say the posted speed is thirty. If it comes back as thirty-three or thirty-four, we're not going to move forward with any type of traffic calming just because trying to achieve anything less based upon that doesn't really make the cost benefit and purpose. But if it's thirty-six, forty miles per hour, then that would be a candidate for us to look at something. Also, crash history or volumes would be other candidates. So again, once you move upon that screening process, you would have kind of a plan, review and approval. Where we as a city really are controlling that as far as engineering recommendations. We're not necessarily looking for recommendations from the citizens. We just want to know what is their concern, what is the driving issue? And then we will work with them to say, here's the proposed plan, what feedback do you have and move forward? Then there'll be a funding and prioritization. So we've kind of put together criteria to how do you rank these projects? And then it will be a little bit more substantial than maybe just putting up a stop sign because we, you know, that's something we don't do for traffic, uh, speed control. And so we're going to have to find funding at some point. So does that come from half cent? Do we put together a pot of money that we do to help do some of these projects? And there is an opportunity that if private citizens or private companies want to help participate in putting these in, that is kind of outlined in our process of how that helps. And then finally, you would have the design and implementation. That is something that we would actually bring to city council for your approval and also have that representative here to show their support. So there's kind of some steps to put in place, a little bit more process and forward. To talk very quickly about different measures and device that we have kind of outlined as potential. This is not an all encompassing solutions. But really, we talk about horizontal deflection, vertical deflection, street width reduction, routing restrictions and education. And so what does all that mean? Horizontal deflection. Really, you got a straight roadway, we want to make people not have a straight path through that roadway. We want us having them slow down, have to divert their travel path, whether that be, so we got up here, chicanes is one. Think of those as basically medians in the road that make people kind of weave, slow down. Realigned intersections, that would be like at a T intersection. Again, you're kind of putting a median there to help divert people through, it's not a straight path. And then you have traffic circles like in roundabouts. There are two different things. There are some nuances of those from the engineering side. I won't get into those today, but those would be kind of some of your more neighborhood options that you could look at to, to divert that travel path and slow people down. Vertical deflection. Basically, these two options in there, raised crosswalks, raised intersections. So you're basically similar to speed bumps, but they're much more stretched out. So it's not such a severe change in elevation. And you're raising that location of the pedestrian and creating them much more higher, much more visible, and you're slowing that traffic down. Street width reductions. So basically, think of narrowing the street, making it a little bit more constrained, so it's not such as wide open. So people have to slow down to go through there. Top left, Choper Islands, this would be more of a mid-block application. You think of places where you have on-street parking and you're trying to cross the road as pedestrian, you're blocked by that vehicle. You can't really see both directions. So this kind of pushes that pedestrian out in a safer zone, makes them more visible, reduces that crossing distance for them. Same thing with the bulbouts, basically, but that's at an intersection, very similar application. Lane diets or repurposing of the roadway. So basically, if you've got a place where you have more lanes than you really need, you can restripe that to get fewer lanes. You're reducing those travel lane widths. We've actually done this on Old Omen between Fifth Street and McDonald. We had some safety issues at Old Omen and McDonald. And restriping that from a four-lane, two-lanes east direction to a center turn lane has really helped with that safety. And also, I think you get a calming effect because people can't just race by on that. And we're actually looking, going to do that on MLK. We've talked about, we're fixing to restripe that and repaved it. So from West Gentry over to North Broadway, that's a five-lane cross-section. And so going back with a three-lane cross-section, on-street bike lanes that are buffered. So really kind of creating a much more pedestrian-friendly location. And then median islands would be something that would be mid-block where you have the room to give a pedestrian refuge. You're cutting down that crossing distance and again, narrowing lanes. and again, narrowing lanes. So, that is the quick overview. I will say, this is something that we presented to our Traffic Safety Board and something that they approved, seven, seven-zero, to move forward and try to help improve the safety of our citizens of Tyler and give them a process to follow for this.
Old Jacksonville. I got a call yesterday from a citizen that said that he lives on Old Jacksonville, and he said it's right south of Chilton. People just blow and go trying to get through Sunnybrook. And you have these areas all over town where people want stop signs, people want speed bumps. And as you've already said, we can't do those or we haven't done those. How do you, without doing lane diets and all this expensive stuff you're talking about, how do you, how do you just, how do you slow people down on Old Jacksonville or on Old Bullard or on Chilton or College or Donnybrook? How do you just get people to slow down without all that expense?
I think it's very difficult, because people are going to drive what that environment feels is comfortable. And unfortunately, they're not paying attention to everybody else who's on the roadway. There are some maybe things with speed feedback signs that are permanent, that kind of report that, you know, flashing your speed or flashing the speed limit when you're going over it. And those are things that we've actually outlined as far as the education piece that we could do. You know, that's not putting something in the roadway. That's putting something on the side of the roadway, giving that education, making people more aware of what they're doing. Because a lot of times, some of these roadways, it's easy to get to go in 35, 40, you know, if the grades are a certain way. You don't even realize what you're doing. So, kind of making that more awareness is one way.
Well, when we've used that trailer, and every council person's requested that trailer to be put somewhere in their district, so people can see that flashing speed, and it does seem to work to slow people down. So, if you had those kind of signs that blinked on Old Jacksonville or different areas, is that a fairly inexpensive?
I don't know the cost, but I have it in my mind. It could be $10,000 to $15,000, depending upon, like for a permanent installation, but that may be high. I don't know that off the top of my head. But those are, a lot of times, solar-powered. And so, we've got to make sure we keep that maintenance on the batteries and different things up. But those are definitely a measure that we want to put in our toolbox to look at implementing.
And I think the use of the word toolbox is important, as Cameron put it, because every street, every neighborhood is different. You know, you're talking about Old Jacksonville. Like, Old Jacksonville's a highway. And so, you know, the thing, if we look at how is pedestrian, much of traffic calming also affects, involves pedestrian mobility and how the pedestrian or bicyclists kind of make sure that they're comfortable in that environment as well, if they're supposed to be in that environment. There's many of our different roadways that are not really designed for pedestrians, or we try to shift them to different areas. That's our trail systems that we've built so much of. So, it is one of those things of where we have to kind of look at each one and see what is the appropriate tool to apply to that. And that's one of the things that Cameron ultimately is bringing before you, is here's this toolbox to apply to whatever, the problem that's before us at this point. And not every problem's going to be the same.
And kind of add, there will be, you know, unique situations. For example, I mentioned that 30 mile-per-hour threshold. We have areas, two come to mind. Old Bullard, between, say, Fair Street and Old Jacksonville, the speed limit's 35 miles per hour. Holly Tree, north of Grande, is 35 miles per hour. So, based upon what we put together today, traffic calming would not be a solution. However, we could go in there and do a speed study. And for that type of environment, we would still look at the 85th percentile speeds. What are people doing? But we'd also look at driveway density. Do you have sidewalks? What kind of pedestrian activity? Is there any type of shoulders? And there's some other criteria that we can look at to say, we may need to lower that speed limit. And so, for some of those unique, there may be a two-step process. And we actually say in here, if we lower the speed limit for somewhere, it needs to be in place for two years before we actually look at doing, doing an improvement. So, we want to see kind of a step-wise. And something like that, that may be a situation where we lower the speed limit and then put in one of those permanent speedback, feedback signs to kind of help make that more aware and see if we can get that compliance.
Cameron, would you address as far as kind of speed limit designations? Because I think that's often sometimes, people, you know, people sometimes ask us, well, why don't you lower the speed limit? But then, there is a portion of that in regards to as far as just from the ability for really law enforcement then to enforce that speed limit. There has, it has to be, there has to be validity behind what that limit is. Not, it just can't be arbitrarily brought down or up to kind of, to suit what we think makes us comfortable.
Absolutely. So, that's where, you know, by default, all our roads are 30 miles per hour. That's by ordinance. So, unless we change it to something different, raise it higher, everything is 30 miles per hour. And to set that speed limit, that's where we need that engineering study. And historically, that 85th percentile has been, and Texas has a guideline for doing those studies. And how do you apply that and set that speed limit? There are, again, some additional things that I said, you know, on some of those streets that are more residential or collectors, that we, there's some criteria that we can have some flexibility. But again, we need that engineering study to support and show that this is it. Because if you don't, and you just arbitrarily set a speed limit, the enforcement of that and the being able to hold to that in the court side of things is very difficult and has issues. So, that's why we want a process that we need to go through.
Cameron, I heard what you said about roundabouts. So, are you a proponent of roundabouts?
Yes. It depends on the location. I think they're a very good tool. I think at locations where you have a multi-way stop, a roundabout will beat that every day of the week, just from an efficiency and a safety standpoint. But you need to be, I think there's very specific locations that you want to look at doing that. And the benefits of a roundabout are, you are slowing people down to a 15 to 20 mile-per-hour speed going through that intersection. Also, you are eliminating right-angle crashes. So, you may have some crashes, but they're sidestriped. Those are less severe. So, there's safety benefits. And I think from an operational moving traffic, they're much more efficient than saying always-stop. So, definitely, I am a proponent of them, but they need to be in the right location. And they have to be designed correctly. If we design them incorrectly, it's going to be a lot of frustration and not be very successful.
Cameron, you mentioned stop signs aren't used to control speed. Can you elaborate on that and what the Texas Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices requires for ratios and when stop signs are needed?
Yeah. So, the Texas Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices is basically kind of your traffic bible. It has federal regulation behind it and state law. There's different levels of you shall do this and we have to follow that. And then, there's things that, hey, you should, kind of best practice and whatnot. But it does state in there that stop signs should not be used for speed control. So, that's playing in there that that's not the purpose of stop signs. Now, when you look at the volumes, you're looking at typically eight hours a day. And off the top of my head, if I remember right, you need 300 vehicles per hour for eight hours a day on the major street and 200 vehicles per hour on the side street. So, those are pretty high volumes for eight hours a day that you have to meet. Or, there's some type of sight distance restriction, or you've seen a crash history. So, those would be the other two things to look at that you may consider doing a multi-way stop. But those volume thresholds, again, because you put in that always-stop and those volumes aren't, you're creating a lot of unnecessary delay. And also, people will start to think, why do you even have this stop sign here and quit paying attention to it? And so, we want to be very careful on the uses of our traffic control devices, so that people respect those and pay attention to them. Because if they, you know, don't feel a need, then they're going to quit ignoring those.
Another question. You mentioned the process of how this could be implemented on a certain street, and a citizen brings forth an idea, and it takes one person to be the spokesperson. But then, you also mentioned the neighborhood has to be on board and in support. Is there a threshold for percentage? Is it greater than 50%? Supermajority of the residents in the neighborhood? What is that threshold to have a neighborhood support?
I believe we set that threshold at 60% of the neighborhood has to show support for wanting to do something in that area.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Well, I was just going to say, kind of follow Stuart. It'll be interesting to see where this goes. I mean, I can see, obviously, what the purpose is, why you want something like this. And what I like most about it is that right there, that it's community-driven. You have somebody on a, in a neighborhood or somewhere, we need this. And I think that's a lot better than the city coming in and saying, hey, we're going to put in these bump-outs, whether you like it or not.
And this is going to be an iterative process. This is not set up as a ordinance or something at this point. It's a policy. This is kind of our standard. We're going to follow. And so, as we see the need to tweak things, and one thing the Traffic Safety Board asks us look at is we have that ranking criteria, is, once we actually start applying that ranking criteria, do we need to adjust the points and how we look at and prioritize projects? So, again, I think this will be an iterative process, but it's a starting point. And I think it's something that we need and be very helpful for citizens.
I think it's a great idea, because I know that all of us up here get phone calls. Hey, they're racing down the street. Can you get the police out here? You know, we try to work with them and work with Chief Toler, but, you know, maybe in the morning, somebody late to work or late to school. It's not all day. But this is a start and a good way to, like Brad said, involve the neighbors and the community.
All right. We do have one card from Katie Robinson. Please come up. If you could state your name and address for the record.
I'm Katie Robinson. My address is 2424 Old Bullard Road, Tyler, Texas, 75701. I'm sorry in advance that my neighbors put me up here. I'm not, I'm not good at public speaking. So, I'll keep it short for you guys. First of all, I want to thank you guys for your time and your consideration on this proactively. I'm very, very grateful that I'm not, you know, standing up here today on the heels of a tragedy, one of our children playing out in front of their house on a neighborhood road and having a terrible accident. And I'm very grateful to my representative and to Cameron, who answered a lot of phone calls for me. I did hear a lot today about some plans. You know, we're, we're talking a lot about the future and some plans and some processes that are going to go into place. I also heard a lot of time. I heard proposals and waiting and review and then getting my neighbors on board, which, for the record, I think a lot of my neighbors are on board. I don't, I don't have a problem getting to 60% threshold. But months is going to turn into years, and years is going to turn into the tragedy that we're all trying to avoid. So, I just want to make sure that when we're going through this process, that we respect that some of these are going to be timely issues that we need to address. I would like to see action. That's all I have. Thank you.
Well, I'll say this. I 100% agree. And everybody up here knows how frustrated I get sometimes when we do these plans and these plans and these plans. And I sit there and say, Hoover Dam was built in five years. I mean, why does it take us so long to do some of the things we do? So, I hear what you're saying. So, thanks for speaking. Sorry.
Thank you.
No, I always have to remind you, Hoover Dam has a lot of people die.
Let's tell them it was built in five.
Some things you can't rush, right?
Any other questions or comments for Cameron?
I would just echo what Councilman Wynn said. You know, there, we all get the phone calls, and we all have those citizens who are concerned about their streets. And so, I know there are several in my district, and Katie just spoke on one. And so, I know there are several that would gladly volunteer to jump to the front of the line and be the test pilots for different programs that need to be implemented.
Our plan is to implement this process, you know, start now and start getting going. And then, you know, specific things like the Old Bullard, you know, that speed study is something we can do now and start looking at that. That's not bound by this issue. And there's still situations where there's safety concerns. Hey, I want an always-stop because of a crash history or a sight distance issue. That's not bound by this process. This is more of those speed-related, that's, what's the underlying cause for that request? So, that's something we'll have to dig into, but just kind of know there's different situations we'll have to apply.
So, Cameron, for Ms. Roberts' benefit, how much time do you think you'll need to bring back to us for us to approve this?
So, from the, you know, from that specific thing, you know, we could hopefully get a speed study done within a month or so and get a recommendation. If that was something we recommended, we would want to take that to our Traffic Safety Board as an ordinance, just to kind of get their support, show them the data. And then, we would come to city council with any type of ordinance change on speed limit signs.
Thank you.
You know, I think a good example of what Cameron kind of walked the council through or has done with the council that's kind of similar to this was the study that we did on the school zones. And so, if you'll remember that, and just to kind of, so that's kind of put things in perspective of, you know, we took a look at that, did a, you know, did a study on the school zones, brought to you all, there's ordinances that the council must pass. And then, those, then we revised the street signs where appropriate. And so, you know, with this policy that allows for that type of action where appropriate to then go into place. And so, council's position in part of this becomes approval of the ordinances, because every, essentially, track, every street has a enforceable speed limit on it or actions on it that are only enforceable because of the law that you pass that makes it enforceable. So, you'll have that components that you'll have, you'll need to do. And then, as far as the funding, where, you know, as far as disposition of funds are going out, over $50,000 on a project may come to council for approval on those situations. Anything further on that one?
All right. Once again, it's a presentation, not an action item, but we would encourage you to keep moving forward. I think everybody's on board with that.
Yes.
Thank you, Cameron.
Thank you, Cameron.
Oh, one. And Chief, while you're coming up, I see a box there, a white box. I know, I realize why you're here. And I want you to know, towards the end of the meeting, we're going to, I don't want you to think we're going to forget you.
But not during the meeting.
But?
But not during the meeting.
Not during the meeting. Okay. Go ahead, Chief.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I have oh-one this morning. We're requesting that the city council consider adoption of ordinance, of an ordinance amending Tyler City Code, Chapter III Civil Service Classification Plan by amending the Civil Service Classification Plan and number of authorized civil service positions for fiscal year 2022 through 2023. We do have a correction in looking at what was submitted in your original package. We found a couple of numerical errors. So, in front of you is a corrected version of those. The overall number did not change. So, 162 is correct. But you'll look, the number of captains had reduced, and so, that needs to remain at 26. And then, that number of firefighters will go to 73. So, you have the corrected.
Any questions for Chief?
So, it is, it is recommended that the city council approve the corrected ordinance amending Tyler City Code, Chapter III Civil Service Classification Plan and number of authorized civil service positions for fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Motion by Hane, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? I also, please, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
We just want to welcome our world traveler back to America.
He represented us well.
Good morning, Kate.
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Item M1 before you is the 2021 Creek Crossing R routes and repairs. That's when the project started. That's why it's 2021. So, this, with a sewer system of our size, where we nearly have about 700 miles of sewer system, and with the topography in the city of Tyler, there's going to be quite a few sewer, sewer line creek crossings or where sewer is running right next to a creek. So, with this project, what we did is KSA inspected and assessed the creek crossings. They gave it a condition rating. They filled out this paperwork. They did the crossing type and what the repair status was. After that information was put together, it was followed by coordination with city staff on maybe how many times we've seen issues at this particular creek crossing, if this one would benefit from it being rerouted, where it wasn't actually crossing a creek, but rerouting it to a better area to protect our asset. So, six of these assessed creek crossings were identified to be rerouted in order to improve the condition and protect the asset. So, the scope of work with this, for this project, was actually just repairing one sewer creek crossing and then rerouting approximately 2,500 linear feet of gravity sewer main. This includes manholes and other appurtenances with the gravity sewer mains. We received four bids for this project. Reynolds and Kay was the low bidder. So, I'm here to request that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Reynolds and Kay in the amount of $1,055,409 for the 2021 Creek Crossing R routes and repairs, bid number 22041.
Any questions for Kate?
Move to approve M-one.
Second.
Uh, motion by Curtis, second by McKeller and Winn, any further discussion? Also, favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
M-two. Leeann.
Good morning. Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
When the renovation of Nobly Young started, we moved the pavilion and the restroom south of that park a little bit, um, to allow for future planning and development of that park and the surrounding area. One of the alternates that we had in the original bid was to add an additional parking lot off of Town Park. For those of you that might not have been out there, that may have not been out there just, um, in, in any time soon, um, the current parking lot is actually off Seton Street, which is almost directly in someone's backyard. And so we thought with the additional parking, um, it would help, especially because we feel like with the new renovations, the park is gonna be utilized a lot more. Some of the feedback that we got when we were going through this process was that people felt like the park was too secluded and so we feel like by opening up this additional parking lot in another area, uh, that people will feel a little more safer using some of, uh, the new equipment out there and the new trap. So, once we have, and once we knew we had the money from the Community Development Block Grant to do the project, we put the project out to bid on August the twelfth and again on August the nineteenth. We opened the bid on August the twenty-fifth. We have two bids, one from SCI Construction in the amount of two-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars and twenty cents, the other from L and L Asphalt Corp in the amount of one-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand-five-hundred-and-three dollars and fifty cents. So it is recommended that the City Council consider authorizing the city manager to award bid number two-zero-dash-zero-four-seven for the construction of a new parking lot at Nobly Young Park to L and L Asphalt Corporation in the amount of one-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand-five-hundred-and-three dollars and fifty cents.
Any questions for Leeann?
Second.
Uh, motion by McGee, second by McKeller, any further discussion? Also, favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Leeann. All right, we're down to the consent agenda.
Move to approve, consent agenda is presented. Got a second.
Uh, motion by Westbrook, second by McGee, any further discussion? Also, favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we are to the city manager's report.
And thank you, Mayor and Council, a few items of note, um, one of the things that just, you know, this is the beginning of the new fiscal year, I think was kinda made mention of the, actually, or the, you know, the invocation. Um, and the great thing about that is just to also show just what is some of the progress that's made, especially with some of the initiatives that y'all have moved forward, um, and even with this past fiscal, we are, actually, Streets Department actually started moving forward on the initiatives for the new fiscal year began. And so they made great progress on the annual public alley maintenance program that we've kinda put into place. And so just this year, they worked with a contractor to map and rate all public alleys, which allowed them to identify and prioritize alleys to develop, you know, to develop an annual work plan. The department performed maintenance by cleaning the debris, patching potholes and grading non-paved alleys. In addition, the following alleys were overpaid, overlaid just this year. Bow Street to Gentry Parkway, West Oakwood Street to West Line Street, Shannon Drive to Shepherd Lane and Bodark to, uh, Farrell's Alley. Um, and so that's one of the things, it's like, as the council's noticed, that alleyways, we have maintenance issues, concerns on those and where this, uh, because of funding that y'all have been able to put forward, the Streets Department has been able to start tackling and doing some great work on. Also, we had National Night Out last week, uh, on October fourth, and it was a great success throughout the community. The one that we always like, as far as the city like to brag about, is the one that we put out at the municipal court, uh, and so their event had more than two-hundred people attend that night. Uh, they got to interact with not only our officers and firefighters, but also other city departments that were there. Um, and so this was one where, uh, code enforcement and transit, uh, were there also as vendors and Parks and Library joined in for the fun also. And so we're glad to do that and I know some of the council members were able to kinda stay and go to their National Night Out parties as well and the Police Department was out in full force, uh, and so it looked to be an incredible evening, uh, last week. And finally, for, uh, the, the city, uh, the City Council and city staff, we're able to attend the Texas Municipal League Annual Conference last week from October fifth through the seventh, uh, and it was the largest gathering that Texas Municipal League, um, Annual Conference ever had. One of the things that we'll be kinda putting out information on, uh, soon is the fact that the city of Tyler won two of the five Municipal Excellence Awards, um, and, which was a record for, um, that was there for that one. Uh, the Homeless Coordination Officer Program and then the Infants at Work Program were the two that were recognized by the state, uh, for, as far as the Municipal Excellence Awards. Also, one of the things suggested for us, the ma, the council and the staff, the training and sessions that we're able to attend, ranging from employment law, social media usage and retention, land use, cybersecurity, community engagement and more, and I know that was something that everyone was very heavily engaged in those trainings, um, and bringing back different information. We're very grateful for the council, um, and their time as y'all expand your knowledge base and, and networking with other cities during that event and just, uh, just the information that you came back home with and kinda how richer you are, um, and as far as just what you know and what you want to be kinda concentrating on. Probably a lot of the question, y'all are asking more questions now, uh, today we noticed, um, after we sent y'all to training, which kinda always worries. Um, and so, but we're very appreciative of the fact that the time that y'all give for that.
That it? Any comments or questions for city manager?
I just wanna make one comment, you know, as we networked on the show floor and, and we met our peers from other cities, um, anytime that I had mentioned, well, actually it happened three times when I, I met with other city, uh, elected officials, they said, Tyler, you guys really do it right, so hands off and, and a round of applause to all of our, uh, city team and staff and we have got presence across the, the entire state of Texas for doing it right, so.
Totally agree. Uh, we are gonna go into executive session, I need to make a couple of comments before we go. We've got a couple of birthdays. Brad, is yours tomorrow?
Wow.
Shirley's is yours today?
Uh, every day.
And Julie, Julie Goodgame, where did Julie go? Julie's back there, it's her birthday as well, so we, we've got birthdays.
Wow.
Always. Hey, thanks, happy birthday. And we did have a, a small group of, of folks here that I think were gonna have a birthday cake for one of our council members and they, I think I made a comment and they disappeared. So.
Oh, they're in the hallway.
Where are they?
Down the hallways.
Okay, I think they're gonna give you, maybe somebody a birthday cake as we go into executive session.
Wow.
Uh, so let me go ahead and read this. I just assumed. Uh, the City Council may go into executive session regarding any item posted on the agenda as authorized by Title Five, Chapter Five-five-one of the Texas Government Code. Notice is hereby given that the City Council may go into executive session in accordance with the following provision of the Government Code, executive item. Under Texas Government Code five-five-one-point-zero-seven-two, real estate deliberation regarding the following. Discuss the purchase, accept, exchange, sale, lease or value of real properties to public discussion of which would have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the city. Any final action to be taken by the City Council will be taken in open session. So we're gonna go into executive session, uh, now and I, I don't know whether to expect any action or not. Yes, we probably have, uh, action. So we're, we're, we're leaving as Mitzi comes back in to, to make a, a cake presentation.
Well.
We can't do that?
That is, the cake presentation, they can present a cake to her, but it cannot be part of the official action of the city, so as you are now adjourned to go into executive session, people can get up and mingle around and if a cake is given to somebody, that's fine.
Just trying to keep everybody from going to jail.
And we appreciate that.
Thank you, did not do well.
I want to officially during the break, say happy birthday to Dr. Shirley McKeller, we are fans. We admire, we appreciate everyone's work on the city council, but today, we wanted to stay here recognizing for Dr. Shirley McKeller's birthday and, uh, Christmas. Thank you so much, I, this is such a surprise and so we, we wanna welcome you, uh, from Texas Canon.
I got a gift for you.
Put you in the paper today, thank you so much for being here.
I got a gift for you. You ready? Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Dr. Shirley McKeller to you. Happy birthday, it's your birthday, it's your birthday, it's your birthday. Happy birthday, Dr. Shirley McKeller to you. Happy birthday.
You guys are amazing. Miss Sherri is there? Wow, you guys are too much, I love you.